We're all set to go.
The chair notes time is 6:02 PM. I call this meeting the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZBA chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZBA members and panel for tonight's meeting. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Philip White.
Present.
Ms. Hilda Greenbaum.
Present.
And Ms. Sarah Marshall.
Here.
The quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Mr. Rob Wachilla, planner for the town. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 21, extended by the Chapter 2, the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48, of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, in Article 10, special permit granting authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been due, advertised, and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties of interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by a town staff and may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing *9 on their phone. The chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where the information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is where the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of the hearing to file the decision. For variance, the board has 100 days from the date of the filing of the variance to file this decision. No decision is final until a written decision is signed by the sitting member, board members, and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day annual, 20-day appeal period for an agreed party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded with the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda, public hearing on ZBA FY 2024-13, Joan O'Meara and Dan Wallach, request for a special permit under Section 5.0112A of the zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, over 50% of habitable GSF of the principal structure, and to extinguish ZBA FY 2008-09 for converted dwelling with a requested waiver from Section 7.0002 at 10 Page Street, Map 11C, Parcel 135, RG, General Residence Zoning District. ZBA FY 2024-14, Vivian Addison and Eric Travis, request for a special permit under Section 5.0112A of the zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, over 50% of habitable GSF of the principal structure on Wildflower Drive in Amherst Woods, Map 21D, Parcel 7, RO, Outlying Residence, Zoning District, and ARP, Aquifer Recharge Protection Overlay District. ZBA FY 2024-15, Town of Amherst, request for a special permit under Section 3.231 of the zoning bylaw to construct structures on the flood-prone conservancy districts, including bridges, boardwalks, and at 191 West Pomeroy Lane, the former Hickory Ridge Golf Course, Map 19D, Parcel 10, RN, Neighborhood Residence, and FPC, Flood-prone Conservancy Zoning Districts. And a public meeting on ZBA FY 2019-06, Antonio Marquez Diaz from Mexicalito, to satisfy Condition 6, in which the new business owner shall present to the board for review and approval at a public meeting, an updated management plan, and any other information necessary to confirm that the use is operating within the scope of the special permit. Following these items, a general discussion from the public, general comment period on matters not before the board tonight, and after that, other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours. To begin, do any members have any disclosures they wish to make for tonight's meetings? If not, the first order of business is a public hearing on ZBA FY 2024, Joan O'Meara and Dan Wallach, request for a special permit under Section 5.0112A of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling unit, ADU, over 50% of habitable GSF of the principal structure, and to extinguish ZBA FY 2008-09 for converted dwelling with a requested waiver from Section 7.0002 at 10 Page Street, Map 11C, Parcel 135, RG, General Residence Zoning District. I was not able to attend the site visit, so who would like to review the... Maybe, Rob, you could head us up, give us a review of the site visit, and then anybody else that would like to add may do so.
Sure. Thanks, Steve. Sorry, Mr. Chair. So basically, it was myself, Ms. Greenbaum, and Ms. Marshall who attended the site visit. Both the applicants were home at the time, and we did walk around the outside of the property. We looked at the ADU. The owners marked on the side where the addition's going to go with tape, and I believe they also drew a marker, marking type material on there to show the dimensions, as well as where the roof line's going to go and where the overhang's going to kind of end on the roof. So, site visit was quick. I took video and sent it to yourself, Mr. Judge, and Mr. White for your review. And that's pretty much it. Ms. Greenbaum, Ms. Marshall, is there anything you wanted to add?
Just, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Hilda.
No, I was just going to say I have nothing to add.
I would just add, in case anyone's listening, there's already, maybe it's, maybe it's a converted dwelling and not an ADU, but there already is an existing second structure, and they're proposing to add one small room, one room to it.
All right. I can add that that existing structure was a dwelling converted from a Model T garage or Model A garage built in the 1930s when the house was built.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. The submissions that the board has received, we've received applicant submissions, ZBA 2024-13 application form, management form, complaint response form, site plans prepared by Randall Isar, and standard lease agreement. In addition, there are staff submissions, ZBA 2008, 2008, I'm having trouble with that. 2000 seems so long ago. ZBA 2008-09 conditions and the building and foundation plans. And also, there's a requested waiver of 7.0002. With that, there's no other, there's no public comment that I am aware of. Is there, Rob? If not, all right, we'd like to hear from the applicants. Could you bring in the applicants, Rob?
Sure. Let me, I see Joan O'Meara in attendance, so Joan or Dan, whoever's controlling it, please accept this panelist's invitation.
Just for the record, I want to note that Rob Mora, building commissioner, has joined the meeting as well. Joan, you're muted.
How's that?
Is that better?
Yep. Now I hear you.
Thank you all. I appreciate your time and energy. This has been a project that's been a small 200-square-foot addition that we really just want to add on to the teeny tiny house.
Before we go any farther, just name and address for the record.
Joan O'Meara, 37 Cosby Avenue, Amherst, Mass.
Thank you.
Owner of 10 Page Street, Amherst, Mass.
Dan Wallach, also of the same residence.
Great. Thank you, guys. We may proceed.
I don't think we need to add anything further, but if you have specific questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Well, just briefly, just, I guess the one thing I would say, just tell us, you have an existing structure there now.
Yes.
Your goal is to add another room to that structure to make an ADU. You have a converted dwelling now, and you want to add a room there to make an ADU, correct?
Correct.
And the reason you need a special permit is that it's over 50% of the habitable space of the converted dwelling. Is that correct?
Well, it's over 50% of the, our main residence.
Principal dwelling, excuse me.
37, principal dwelling, yes.
Which is like somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,400, 1,400 square feet.
Yep.
Yes.
Great. I'm familiar with the area. I've seen it. I've walked, I used to walk there all the time in the block. I think it's, seems to me to be an appropriate addition and consistent with neighborhood. I wonder if any board members have questions? No? There's no questions from board members. It's the opportunity for public comment on this. Rob, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Sure. And I guess just a reminder, those in attendance who wish to make a public comment, please indicate by either using the raised hand function, or if you're calling in, press *9. And there is one gentleman who has a hand raised, Nathaniel. I'm going to allow for them to briefly comment.
Thank you very much, Nathaniel.
Nathaniel, just name and address, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes if you can.
I can do it in much less than that. I'm here with my father, David Mulkey, as well, 14 Cosby Avenue. So, my parents purchased the house on 14 Cosby Avenue in 1916-9. And we have been wildly enthusiastic about Dan and Joan's projects. The work they did to the house when they first moved in vastly improved the neighborhood. The additional unit they built was extremely tasteful and also improved the neighborhood. We're here to say, I can't think of anything more than wanting to support them in every possible way. They are outstanding neighbors. Their architectural design and taste, even gardening, have improved our neighborhood infinitely per decades, and we're wildly in favor of this project.
Thank you very much. Any other people, anybody else wishing to speak? Please raise your hand.
Not seeing anybody else, Mr. Chair. Oh, there is a gentleman named Jay, forgive me if I mispronounced your last name, Tenah. Going to go ahead and allow them to talk.
Thank you. Yes, last name is Tenaja. It's Jay Tenaja. I live at 77 McClellan Street, just adjacent to this property. In question, I wanted to second the perspective. These Dan and Joan have been wonderful neighbors, and we're excited for, to support them. So we're really happy to see their plans and happy, and we just did a large addition ourselves, and they were very, very wonderful neighbors through the process. So we're supportive of this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tenah. Anybody else? Any other public comments? Rob?
Not seeing any hands, Mr. Chair.
All right. We always give the applicant the opportunity to respond to public comments if they so choose. As you know, Joan, you always get a chance as an applicant to respond, but I don't know how, if there's any need to, but you're welcome to if you, if you wish.
How do I do that?
Yeah.
I'll mute. Yep.
All right. If there are no, are there any board questions, further board questions on the matter or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion that we move into the public meeting on this application while keeping the public hearing open in case we need to gather additional information or comments. Do I have such a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? If not, vote occurs. Chair, I vote yes. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
The vote is four to nothing. Motion carries. We're in a public meeting. This public meeting portion is where the board, generally where the board deliberates and is not normally an opportunity for public comment. I'm generally disposed towards this. It seems to make sense. We've set up rules for ADUs, which specifically said that the board can, if the ADU goes beyond what can be done by sight, by right, the board can look at the ADU and approve it. If it's in its judgment, deems it appropriate, I think this is an appropriate ADU, so I have no problem with this at all. Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I would say that, that if your main residence, if the principal residence is relatively small, then ADUs are also going to be even smaller, and it's easy to go over 50%, just because they're small. But eventually, there's too small to be useful. So these structures are far apart. It's a very large lot. And so I think they'll be quite compatible with the neighborhood, and, you know, neither one is, is an outsized structure by any means.
I agree. Any other comments or questions from the board?
You have a comment from Mr. White, Mr. Chair. His hand's up. I don't know if you can see it.
I lost it in the books. There you go, Mr. White.
I do, too. It's a lovely place to do a meeting, bro. No, I would agree with the both of you. I understand the need with the ADU, but as Ms. Marshall was saying, you know, if your primary residence tends to be, you know, on the smaller side, then obviously, it's not difficult to go over 50%. So, yeah, I'm inclined to kind of think positively on this.
Yeah, and I think going over 50% in this instance does nothing to, a detriment of the neighborhood at all. In fact, I think it helps it out because it gives a more attractive housing, more attractive unit than in other ways would be. So I think that's all great. Ms. Greenbaum, you have your hand up?
Yes, I wasn't going to bring this up, but, because it really isn't necessary at this point, but I think we really need to have a discussion about gross square footage, because I believe from looking at the Assos's website and then going to the mass building code, that they have underestimated the living area of the house. But it doesn't change my opinion. I still think that this needs to be passed. But we should discuss gross building area sometime.
Great. Okay. That's a good thing to put for our administrative meeting.
Can I, can I ask which structure did you think was underestimated?
The main house at 1460. Just very briefly, looking at the Assos's page, there are three columns of measurements. One is the one on which they base the evaluation. One is the actual measuring to the outside walls, which is the definition of gross square footage. And then the third column, effective area, but essentially, the second floor, which is evaluated at half the number of square feet for determining the evaluation, is, I have it written down over there, 600 and something feet rather than 300 and something feet, which would bring him under the 50% if we, but we, we don't have a consensus on how actually the square footage is measured in the zoning bylaw, though it's on the, I was told, part of the building code. So I checked the building code on the second floor. Anything inside of three square, three-feet-high knee walls counts as habitable living area. And so I think we need to decide how we're going to measure it next time, because we might have saved him issues involved in calling a public hearing.
Thanks, Ms. Greenbaum. What I'd like to do now is just review conditions. This report in the, in the draft project application report. Conditions suggested by this in the report, I think, are fine. First one is, a particular standard has to be built as, as per the site plans. We have to nullify the existing special permit. Either one or the other has to be, of the dwelling units have to be occupied by the owner. No more than two adults should live there, within the ADU at any time. Exterior lighting is downcast. Street numbers visible. Parking shall occur in approved services only. Trash receptacles shall be screened. Property shall register rental, residential rental program. Shall, standard provision upon renewal of the residential rental program, submit complaints. 11, the exterior siding of the ADU shall match that of the principal structure, and the roof of the ADU shall either be cedar shingles or match the existing shingles. Anybody have any problem with those conditions, or do they wish to add any conditions to the list of conditions? If there's no, if there's no discussion about conditions, nobody, is your hand up to, to talk?
Oh, no.
Okay. If there's no, no discussion on conditions, I would entertain a motion to approve the conditions and block.
Still move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? If not, vote occurs on the motion to approve the conditions and block. Chair votes yes. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Conditions are approved. Now we have to look at the waiver request and the findings that we have to make under Section 5. Generally, the findings we have to make under, under Section 5 are, is that there are several general requirements. This isn't a formal finding, but we, but in view of this application, all the requirements from 50113A through N are, seem to be satisfied. The one question on the, on the draft is extent of the detached dwelling shall be located behind the front building, but that's a little complicated. The point of this is, was to make sure that it didn't stick out. It's actually going to, the new room is actually going to be facing the other building, so I don't think it really, this is really applicable on this point. That's the only thing that's raised. I think all the...
Steve, Steve, could I add to that?
Yes, you sure can.
Yeah, that this property runs the entire length of a block. I mean, it has three, bounded by three streets. So what is the front and what is the...
Yeah, exactly. And it doesn't, it doesn't get closer to one of those streets. It gets closer to the house. It's just, in this case, this is a case where the, this requirement just doesn't work for this property.
Right.
I think. Yeah, I think, I'm glad you agree, Ms. Marshall. Lastly, we have a waiver request for, for parking, because that is waived so that they can have, because again, this runs the whole length of the block, having car parking in the driveway facing Crosby Avenue. They're not, they should be able to do that, continue that, and I would urge that we grant that waiver. And then the design review principles, again, from Section 5.0113Q are met, even to the extent of the color of the building. So I think we've met all the requirements under, under Article 5. I recommend that we approve the waiver, and now I'll run through the 10.38 findings that we have to make for any special permit. The first is 10.380 and 10.381, that it suitably located in the neighborhood, I mean, it's residential neighborhood. 10.382, 83, 85, 85 and 87, that would not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution or a number of other factors. It's not, there's no significant change in that. 10.384 is, deals with appropriate facilities. It has appropriate facilities for the operation of the proposed use. 10.386 is conformance with parking regulations. If the waiver is granted, then we would be in compliance on 10.386. 10.387, safe vehicular movement, it's already, I think, it has that already within the, within the property. 10.388 is not applicable. 10.389 is disposal or storage of refuge in their, they have sufficient facilities. 10.390 and 391 are not applicable. 10.392 deals with adequate landscaping. They have, they have provided for screening the back of the property for lights. 10.393 deals with adjacent properties from lighting, and they're going to have downcast lighting there, so I think we meet that. 394 doesn't apply. 10.395 is creating disharmony with respect to terrain. There's no, there's no significant change regarding that. 10.396, screening for storage areas. There's screening of trash receptacles. 10.397 is adequate recreational facilities. There's only a modest change in the amount of open space. And 10.398 is, is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, and I think that's clear that it is. So I, I'm prepared to have a motion that we grant the waiver request, 7.002, if I'm right on that, Rob, and that we make the findings required in Article 5 as well as Section 10.38.
Mr. Chair, before we grant the waiver, is it okay if I clarify what the waiver is for?
Sure.
All right. So the waiver from 7.0002 deals with having more than two vehicles parked in the front property line of the property, basically, the front setback line. In this case, the applicant has two driveways. So one is essentially where the two cars parked for the ADU, and towards the front where the main structure is, is their driveway to park for that property. So by granting this waiver, you don't restrict them to only having two cars park in the front setback at all times, which, mind you, they have frontage on three streets, McClellan, Page Tree, and Cosby Ave, and that's essentially what you're granting with this waiver.
I have my...
So let's just have the motion out there, and then we'll have a discussion of the motion. So do I have a motion to, I have a motion to approve the special permit application with waivers and conditions and extinguishing ZBA FY 2008-09 and to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll move, and I have a comment to make.
I'll second it.
All right. Move and comment. Ms. Marshall, you had your hand up first.
Oh, yeah. I, I just, I just need someone to, I would like someone to explain to me under 5.0113.
Yep.
Item C. Oh, no, D. Refer, no, no, dwelling may be used simultaneously for accessory lodging. What does that mean? What does that mean, accessory lodging?
So basically, that refers to like, like a bed and breakfast.
Pan Airbnb?
Yeah, like a short-term rental, essentially, you know, a way, like a short-term rental to make money off of, basically. That's what accessory lodging is.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Chair, I want to comment, do we vote to approve the findings? Yep.
I thought we did.
I don't think we did, no. That's why I noticed you jumped ahead a little bit there, so I don't know if we approved the findings as, as read off.
Oh, I thought it was all in one big motion. Can we not do that?
We'll amend the motion to approve the findings. If we didn't do it, we'll approve the motion to, to adopt.
I have something to add.
Okay, so just...
I wanted to add, the 10 points, the first one, appropriateness in the neighborhood, that these people receive the certificate of appropriateness from the local historic district commission for the building and for the lighting, and I think that's appropriate to add that.
Great. Yes.
Thank you, Hilda.
Good. All right. So the motion before us is a motion to approve the special permit application to, to make the findings required under 10.38, as well as the waiver, as well as findings under Article 5, to extinguish... to extinguish extinguish ZBA FY two thousand eight dash zero nine and to close the public hearing on this matter. That's the motion, all in one. All right, is there any discussion on that motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion, it's a roll call vote, and we need four votes. The chair votes aye, Mr. White.
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
The vote is four to nothing. Motion carries. Joan and Dan, congratulations.
Oh, we're done?
You're done, you're done.
Thank you all for all your time and effort.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to go over the next steps with the applicants so they're aware of the process?
You know, I I think you can do that offline.
Okay.
I and I think Joan's probably pretty familiar with them, but that offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
They should just be back in touch with with you, Rob, if they shortly to go over to go over all that.
Okay.
All right, next order of business is ZBA FY twenty twenty four dash fourteen. Vivian Addison and Alan Eric Travis requesting special permit under section five point zero one one two A of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling unit over fifty percent of habitable ground. I guess it's gross, whatever GSF is, what is GSF? Ground.
Gross square footage.
Ground square footage.
No, so it means a gross square footage. It's essentially, it's the area of each floor of a building combined.
It's a gross square footage of the principal structure on Wildflower Drive and Amherst Woods, map twenty one D parcel seven. Our outline residential zoning district and Aquifer recharge protection overlay district. We go with submissions that we have for that matter. Oh, but first, since I the reason I forgot is because I wasn't there, site visit. Rob, you want to?
Sure, yeah.
Site visit.
Yeah, the site visit occurred on Tuesday at five. Ms. Greenbaum and Ms. Marshall are both present, as well as the two applicants. And the lot is is undeveloped, so there's still trees there. They were stakes marked for the location of where the driveway is going to be off the common driveway. So they have their own individual driveway that connects to a common shared driveway with three other, sorry, two other properties. They also staked out the garage dimensions, as well as the main house dimensions and the ADU dimensions. And they also had marked located areas where they're going to tie in for their water and sewer. You can actually see this the connection areas sticking out of the ground closest to the main road, Wildflower Drive. And then other than that, Mr. Chair, there's not really much else that happened on the site visit. Uh, Ms. Greenbaum or Ms. Marshall, do you want to add anything?
Just at the ground. It's level and then drops off quite a bit down to a I don't know, gully, lower lower place. So it's my understanding that the structures. I mean, the garage will be at the top, basically, and then these other structures will be further down, literally down somewhat. So they probably won't be very visible from from the driveway even.
Great. All right, thank you, guys. Submissions of ZBA, the applicant has submitted ZBA FY twenty twenty four dash fourteen application forms, management forms, complaint response forms, a project narrative, an email describing the ADU dimensions from January eighteenth of this year, comments from the tree warden from January fourth, a drainage map, driveway easement filed with the registry of deeds, wetlands resources review, ZBA twenty twenty four dash fourteen site plan review, site plans prepared by Randall Isner, the ADU building and foundation plans, lighting plans, landscaping plans, and a color scheme diagram. There's also staff submission, which is, of course, the project application report. Has there been any public comment received? I am unaware of any, Rob.
So I haven't had any written public comments submitted, Mr. Chair, but there were. Did you mention the two department comments from? So one comment from the town engineer and then one comment from the wetlands administrator?
It wasn't on the. I I have them in the packet, but they weren't listed on the in the submissions.
Sure, I can briefly, I could briefly mention. Do you may go over what they were, Mr. Chair, or do you want me to just state that they were submitted?
Just state that they were submitted.
Sure, yeah, so Jason Skiles, town engineer, submitted a comment, as well as Aaron Jack, the wetlands administrator. Both of them say date, which I believe was March twelfth.
Great. Nor the submissions and nor the public comments. This is the opportunity for the applicant to make their presentation. Who wishes to speak for the applicant?
So we have, let's see, I see Eric Travis in attendance. I will go ahead and send a panelist invitation, they just have to accept.
Here.
Hi.
Hi, just give us your name and and address and for the record.
Good evening, my name is Vivian Addison. This is my husband, Alan Eric Travis, and we currently live at one forty two B Amherst Road, Pelham, Massachusetts.
Great, you can proceed.
Two years ago, my family collectively decided to move from our large cities to a smaller town to live closer to each other so we could be an integral part of each other's lives, just help support each other with childcare, pet care, and also to be close as we, the grandparents. Age in place, we purchased a lot in Amherst Woods and together designed a home that was big enough, but not too big for my daughter and her spouse and their two and four year old children and an ADU that was right sized for our needs as grandparents. The ADU house and garage as planned are modular units built by an Amherst company in Pennsylvania. They have mossy green lapped siding with charcoal gray standing seam roof, white trim, and they are built in the same cottage style and with the same finishes, except for their front doors, which are different. The ADU is tucked away behind the back of the garage and has its narrow side presenting, so it appears smaller than the main house, which and it is smaller, which is the tallest of the buildings. By right, we're able to build an ADU that is fifty percent of the size of the main house with less than a thousand square feet. The ADU we are proposing to build is fifty seven percent the size of the main house and is eight hundred and seventy five square feet of habitable space, well below the one thousand square foot limit. So we are requesting a special permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll pass it.
All right. Any questions from the board for the applicants? Sorry, Ms. Marshall, you have your hand up, is that just inadvertent?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to notify the board. I'm having a little bit of internet issues, so I'm going to disconnect my video, and hopefully that'll solve it.
All right, thank you. All right. The the one thing that that Mr. Watchella did refer to was the comments from the Department of Public Works, as well as the Conservation Commission. They both, the essence of both of those comments were that there was no implications for either for the project, for the conserva, for the water quality or conservation. They wanted to have you include the limits, the borders on the plans, and you've done so. So you've met with their requirements. I don't think it's going to be a problem. I don't think they're posing any opposition or concern, stayed no concern about the the application. I have no, I have no special questions. I think this is this makes great sense. And I I I think it's a great idea to be able to create, as you called it, a family compound and live close to your grandchildren, really close to your grandchildren and your children. That's that's wonderful. Are there any other comments from people on the on the board regarding this application? All right, is there any public, Rob, is there this would be a time for public comment? Public wishes to comment on this, so indicate by raising your hand or pushing star eight, star nine on your phone. We'll and when you do comment, please comment to the board.
So there is a few hands raised, Mr. Chair. The first one was Mandy Jo Hanneke. I'm gonna go ahead and give him the speaking chair.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Mandy Jo Hanneke, and I live at twenty six Foxglove Lane. Please note that I'm speaking as a resident of Amherst and in a butter, but not in my capacity as a town councillor, despite what the screen shows. I can't change my name. I am, as a both resident and as a butter, who will be able to see this project from my backyard and rear house windows. I request that you approve the special permit and do so without delay. The special permit application is reasonable as it does not cause substantial inconvenience to a butters, reasonably protects a journey and premises, and is in harmony with the neighborhood and the master plan. This request for an ADU is before you because the main house is being built to the current needs of the owners and is smaller than many, if not most of the houses in our neighborhood. If the owners had chosen to build a larger primary residence, the proposed ADU would not exceed fifty percent of the primary residences habitable GSF. Frankly, we should applaud the owners for building to the size they need, not a size that would make their path for adding an ADU easier, given our need for more affordable housing in Amherst. Denying this request or taking too much time to approve the special permit would only encourage them and future landowners to build larger than needed primary residences in order to have an easier path toward building an ADU. As you know, the ADUs that are less than both a thousand square feet and fifty percent are by right without needing a public hearing. So if a special permit takes too long, a landowner can simply obtain a building permit by increasing the habitable GSF of the primary residence. So the potential for simply building larger in order to receive a building permit for an ADU should be taken seriously by the ZBA. Please don't encourage such a practice by denying or delaying the approval of a special permit in this instance. Amherst should be encouraging the building of smaller residences and ADUs, just like this project proposal. We need to encourage projects like this, building two dwelling units on this currently undeveloped one and a half acre flag lot on Wildflower Drive is a great example of encouraging more infill development and smaller dwellings. So I am a loud and clear yes, please approve the special permit for an ADU larger than fifty percent of the habitable GSF of the primary residence, and please do so swiftly. I want to thank you for your time, but my husband is not here yet, so if you'll just indulge me. He's not able to join because he's picking up our children and his comment, I will be very quickly. His name is David Hanneke, and he lives with me. He would also like to say, yes, the plans presented seem entirely reasonable in size and scope, especially when compared with the other dwellings in our neighborhood. And while it might not from him necessarily be relevant to your deliberations, he finds that the designs are quite tasteful, and he appreciates the care taken in the lighting plan with its emphasis on downlit, dark sky compliant, warm color, temperature lights. He wishes to say that the original developers of our neighborhood had taken that amount of care in the lighting plans because our neighborhood is not so compliant. He'll be able to see the new structures from the backyard, and he would like to go on record as yes in my backyard. Thanks, and he thanks the ZBA members for the care and attention to these issues and welcomes the applicants to our neighborhood. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
There is.
So indicate.
There is another hand, Stephen Fraser. I will go ahead and give him the microphone.
Mr. Fraser, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Stephen Fraser, I'm at ten Wildflower Drive.
You may may proceed.
Yes, hi. Yes, my property is adjacent to the access to this development. And I I have two concerns. One is primarily what I will see is a garage and parking. And so my concern is whether there's any design for some kind of screening. And and my other concern is although the 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 owners do not plan to rent this ADU as a as a rental unit, my my concern is that it will eventually eventually become a rental unit. And I would like to know what what kinds of processes are in place to manage that.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Is there any other public comments?
There is a public comment from Grace Naaman. Go ahead and give him the microphone. Sorry.
Hello, I'm Francisco Quiros, I'm Grace Naaman's husband.
And I'm here also.
Grace is here. And we're new new to the idea of an ADU, so we're learning here. But we're curious. We in the online information, we weren't able to find out about the full size basement they they plan to do on the ADU. Does it have a door going to the outside? Or how are you going to get out of it? Is the rear of the house going to be at the the normal ground level, et cetera? Another question is, can you elaborate on the HVAC equipment? The compressor is it going to be in in the back of the house away from us or where where is it going to be? We're also concerned about the heavy equipment that's going to be used to install this. And because they're going to have to drive over the water line that's underground. So that's another concern. And in the future, if we add an ADU or another neighbor on this flag lot adds an ADU, we're, by the way, we're their neighbors, adjacent neighbors. How will we resolve any traffic problems that arise? Otherwise, we're glad to see new neighbors and we hope this all works out for you.
Thank you. Other comments? Please indicate that you wish to speak by raising your hand or pressing star nine on your phone.
There is a comment from Kathy Pollard.
Ms. Pollard, give us your name and address for the record, please, and you may speak.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, yes, thank you. Kathy Pollard, fifteen Wildflower Drive, across the street from these new neighbors who are developing. It sounds like a wonderful development, and I look forward to to that. And I'm pleased to hear that everyone is pleased with the apparent intentions to the design. I was wondering about the front lot that is to the side and in front on Wildflower that was spun by Charlotte Hand and Robert W. That has used to be the clear cut. I was wondering what the connection is to the developing property that we're talking about now? And why is clear cut? And if if there is a connection here and if there's if there's been any assessments of the erosion and the the bone which has a stream like a river together. And that's my that's my question.
So it was a little hard to a little hard to hear you at the end there. So you you wondered about the clear cutting and the effect on the on a stream and then what app? After that, I didn't understand you. Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'll do the best I can. There is a lot in front.
Yep, yeah, no, no, just the end of your comments, one I couldn't hear.
I was I was curious why that was clear cut, if the lot is connected to the the owners who are developing behind. And if there was assessments on the water fed of the stream below and the potential for the erosion, and I'm just wondering why the wood was was cut down, which was actually a habitat for wildlife there. The PLS are gone, and I was just wondering what the connection is between that lot and behind and why it was clear cut.
Got it, okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment, Ms. Pollard.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Oh, you bet. I thought you'd finished. Are there other public comments? Robert, got anybody else? Okay, so this is the opportunity after public comments, the applicants have an opportunity to respond, if they so choose, to the to the points raised. If you wish to, it's a time to do that.
Yes, in regards to the last comments regarding the lot that's actually on Wildflower Drive, that is not our lot. It has nothing to do with us. We have not cut down a single tree on our property yet. That is owned by somebody else. So that's not us. In regards to Francisco's concerns and questions, the HVAC equipment will likely be in between the two houses. There'll be air source heat pumps. They're very quiet. And your garage, there's a lot of room in garage before your house, so we're quite a distance away. But they probably will be in between the two houses. The HVAC guy said he needed to come out and actually see the buildings in place to go ahead and do set those. There is a full basement because the land goes like this and then slopes straight down. We have to have a full basement, and our builder said you would be foolish not to have a means of egress from there if you have a full basement.
And that'll be on grade.
And that 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 will be on grade, but it's very much lower, and it will face out towards the towards the dip, towards the trees. It won't be visible from other properties. And then I can't remember any other concerns. Oh.
Protecting the water line. Heavy equipment.
Oh, the heavy equipment, yes. When the construction workers do it, they usually put a, you know, ply or something down before the equipment goes over. We're aware that the water line runs about four feet away from the shared driveway. We're, regardless, equipment is going to have to go over that to get into our lot, and that's part of the easement. We will make sure our builder is aware of it. He is actually already aware of it, and they will guard it, protect it as well as can be protected.
The town, and we can ask Mr. Mora, the building commissioner, I'm assuming that there are protocols for protection of the water. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the first thing is locating them. The contractor will, you know, carefully maneuver their equipment over it. So, you know, that contractor should be well aware of how to, you know, make make it their way into the lot and bring the equipment in safely. Sometimes they play it over those areas to protect the pipe. Sometimes they're able to avoid it in other ways.
I can't remember. Were there other concerns that were addressed that I missed?
You can, there are other, two other concerns that I don't think you've addressed. One is, if you wish to address, one is the the screening of the garage, and second, what if it becomes rental at a later point in time upon sale?
Okay, what if it becomes rental? If we were to sell the property, it's possible it would become rental. Amherst has a process by if you rent a rent a building, you have to go through the city of Amherst and have a plan on file. And we we were required to do a plan. We have a plan on file already. We are not going to rent it. And if we do, we have to go through the process, just like any other rental property.
I'll have, I'll also have you to Rob, Mora, Rob Wachilla describe it, but this will become an ADU, and there's certain restrictions on, they have to have a principal owner in the in the main building, and it can be rented, but those will continue, those restrictions will go with the property. And so it won't change its status now of being able to rent. So Rob or Rob, can you elucidate that better than I did?
Yeah, and also want to add one more thing that's important, too, before you can technically habitate the ADU. So you have to, so for the rental part, you have to register with the town's rental registration program, which I believe is done, Rob, if I'm correct on this, is it done through the board of, is it the licensed commissioners who do that, or is it done administratively?
That's done administratively through inspection services.
Okay, and then the other thing, so in order for the ADU to be permitted, the property has to be owner occupied in perpetuity. So essentially, the owners have to file a deed restriction with the registry of deeds, saying that at least one of the buildings is going to be owner occupied at all times, even if they're going to live in both. That's just something they have to file in order to even have the approval to construct the ADU. So that's why it was included as a condition to the special permit and to the previous application as well.
So it'd be treated as any other ADU in Amherst?
Yeah, exactly.
And as to the screening, the way the driveway comes in, the driveway is going to have to go up to the garage. There's no way to screen the front of the garage because that's driveway access. The house itself is set back behind the garage and down lower. So, you know, we're planning to, there is going to be a little bit of a fence, but it will be visually, it'll be fairly open. I guess we could plant some shrubs in the front there. We'd be happy to, except there's there's driveway there. Also, there's the cut, there's the barge that you turn around in. So we could, we could do some in the front there. It's it's kind of difficult, though, you, you know, you can't plant on asphalt.
Last point is that a question raised about, a comment raised about watershed assessments, and that was done by the ConCon and the Tom, Jason Skeels, the town, and if there's no impact upon the, they found that there's no impact upon the watershed.
Mr. Chair, I thought that was, that concern was raised in connection with the other lot that was cleared, which doesn't belong to these.
I thought that, I may, maybe I misread, but I thought, Mr. Wachilla, can you?
Yeah, I'll clarify. So basically, the comments from Mr. Skeels, the town engineer, and Ms. Jock, the wetlands administrator, were that they don't encroach on any resource, wetland resource areas or water bodies, but towards the back of their property, it does kind of go down to this valley, which has a mound behind it, and then that goes up and down into a water stream behind it. So they're pretty far away, and they have this natural drainage area at the back of their property. So that's basically what the comments said, and that neither one of them had any concerns from a stormwater perspective.
So I think we're, Ms. Marshall, I think we're both right.
Well, I, I, I thought you were right. One of the comments from a member of the public just minutes ago was about, and I thought that was about where all the trees had been cut down. So a different watershed issue.
Yeah, different property.
But the implication of this, this application is that it has no effect on groundwater.
Well, no effect on wetlands, I guess, is the biggest concern, yeah.
Yep, on wetlands. All right. Any other questions or comments from board members regarding this? Any questions for the applicant? If not, I'd entertain a motion that we move to a public meeting on ZBA 2024-14 while keeping the public hearing open in case we need to gather additional information.
Almost.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, the vote occurs in the motion to move to pub, to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion carries four to nothing. This is the time when we debate the public special permit application. My impression of this is that it's a well-thought-out use of an ADU and use of space, and they, there's minimal disruption to the neighborhood. I think many of the questions that have been raised by members of the public are legitimate, and I think they have been, there's an answer for most of them, I think satisfactorily from the, in the project and from the prospective builders and the owners of the land. So I'm disposed to approve this. I'd like to know if other people have other thoughts, concerns, or questions regarding other board members' thoughts, concerns, or questions regarding this.
I just want to say, I think it's a great use of a, of a tough property, the way it, you know, declines so precipitously, I think.
Yeah, really. I didn't get to the site, but but from the map, it's a pretty dramatic drop-off of the rear of the property.
Glad it can be used.
Had a lot of buildable space there, yeah. All right. If there are no other questions or concerns regarding this, I'd like to first go over the conditions from the draft application report, look at those, and then based on those conditions, I think we can make our, we can make findings depending upon whether the conditions are approved. The first condition in the draft project application report is standard. It's, Mr. Wachilla? Your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So I do have the conditions up, but I wanted to clarify on a question that was brought up by Mr. Fraser earlier about the garage being in view from the street. I just want to also emphasize that the owners are very constrained on where they can put these buildings on the property, because the fly's part is the part closest to the road and the driveway. So if they were to push it any further back, they wouldn't be able to do it, because most of the property is just that slope going down the, towards the valley. So to move the garage further back would be very difficult to do. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Put the the conditions back up. Number one is pretty much standard. It's got to be built as to site plans. Two deals with the the fact that this is going to be a deed restriction, and at least the principal owner will have to live in any of the ADU or the principal residence. The owner will have to live in one of the two units. No more than two adults can live at the ADU at all times. All exterior lighting must be designed to be downcast and dark sky compliant according to the ZBA rules and regs. Street numbers shall be clearly marked. Parking shall occur on surfaces, approved surfaces only. Trash receptacles shall be screened. If they wish to rent out one, they have to, one unit, if the owner wishes to rent out one unit, they have to abide by the rental management system of town. If an active rental registration permit is in place, they have to have an annual complaints and violation log report. There's a restriction on the use of, not a restriction, but sodium chloride, if used, shall be used at a minimum, and the base ratio, giving a base ratio of one part salt to 10 parts sand. Fertilizers, pesticides, and other leachable lawn and garden chemicals shall be used in accordance with lawn care regulations of Massachusetts pesticide board. There, in the draft application report, there was a question about whether we should be considering some of the restrictions on or on on design reviews, color scheme, lighting, single type. I'm not inclined to, I'm not inclined to deal with that in this application, because we're looking at a standalone home, but I'd leave that up to other board members, but it doesn't seem to need to be particularly applicable at this point.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
They did, the applicants did also submit a sheet with the colors.
It looks close enough, but that's, that's my, my opinion.
No, no, I'm just saying they have, they have, I think they've satisfied.
Much of this, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we need to do anything more.
Right.
Ms. Greenbaum?
I'm curious about number three, about two adults. Does that include minor children down the line if, for instance, somebody does rent that building that's not a member of the family who does have minor children, or if a minor, one of the children is big?
I don't know. You know, I don't know the answer to that, Ms. Greenbaum. Mr. Mora? Is that, it just says no more than two adults. It doesn't seem to have a limitation on if there's a child or a minor in addition to the two adults.
I don't think it does, but, you know, I actually, after reading that, I'm wondering if that's necessary, and I think it should probably follow the, the language in the bylaw for all ADUs that, you know, is related to the number of unrelated residents.
Yeah.
Of three, yeah. I don't, I'm not sure if there's any reason why that condition should be worded that way, referring to two adults.
Was that something from the applicant include that, wish that to be the case?
Well, the applicant include that in their narrative, and so that's why I put in there, but Mr. Mora did bring up a good point that condition three should be changed, so it should say no more than three unrelated adults, just so it matches the language in the bylaw, and I think that'd probably be the most appropriate way to do it.
And I guess this is one place where we get the reaction from the applicant. Is that acceptable with the applicant?
Sure.
Yep, you're fine with it?
Yes.
I'm not having any more kids, and I'm only going to live with him, but yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I would just note that this same condition was in the permit we just granted earlier this evening.
Yeah. Well, you know, I didn't pick it up at that one either.
Yeah.
Grace.
Well, if there's just, if there's like a standard list that Rob's pulling from, maybe delete that one.
You mean, want to go back to the, just what's in the bylaw? In the future? Ms. Greenbaum?
No, my hand is so up. No, I just wanted to bring it up because you never know. This, this permit is going into the registry of deeds, and it is presumably ineffective perpetuity, and so you don't want to mess people up down the line if they want to sell the house, and it has restriction on it that might make it difficult.
Yes. All right. With that amendment to the conditions, are there any other changes or members wish? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve the conditions in block as amended by the permission for up to three adult, unrelated adults.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If no discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the conditions in block as amended. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
The conditions are approved. What was four to nothing, conditions are approved. The next is the making the findings we have to make under section five, generally, it is, generally, I think not generally, it totally complies with the requirements of section five, general requirements for an ADU. Dimensional requirements are all met. Parking requirements are met. Design standards are met. And even the driveway is the narrowest is 12 feet, but it, the minimum exit is 10. Minimum feet wide for one-way use is 10, 18 feet, 12 feet is the most narrow part, so that's fine. The design standards are also met. So I make, I think we can make the findings that the the application comports with everything needed for an ADU in terms of section five.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
The ADU is more than 50% of the GSF of the principal residence, so we just have to explicitly.
That's, yeah, that's the reason they're getting a special permit. Yep, is because it exceeds that. Yes. Yep, and I think that's stated in the, in the, yeah, it's stated in the, in the description of the special permit before us, is that it's there because it's 50%. It exceeds 50%. So, so unless there's any objections on the findings, we'll move on to the, the findings under 10.38. Under 10.380 and 381 generally deal with suitability for the neighborhood. It's residential neighborhood, and this is a further residential use. 10.382, 10.383, 85, and 87 generally deals with nuisances caused by a host of different mat, different ways, pollution, noise, odor, dust. We don't think, I don't think that it does any of that. It doesn't create a nuisance. 10.384, is there a? 10.38-4, is there appropriate facilities provided for the operation of the proposed use? It'll have town water and town sewer. 10.38-6 deals with parking sign regulations. This is dealt with in the conditions. Requirements of section 7.1. 10.38-7 provides for convenience, safe vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The proposed parking layout and driveway do not present any issues to vehicular and pedestrian movement on the site. In fact, it looks to be pretty well designed. 10.38-8 is not applicable. 10.38-9 provides for adequate method of disposal and/or storage. They have done that with the appropriate facilities for trash storage. 10.39-0 is not applicable. 391 is not applicable, or 10.39-1 is deals with only removal of trees within the project area where the water and sewer line will be installed. No other landscapes or scenic features would be disturbed. So I think they meet the requirements. We can make the findings under 10.39-1. 10.39-2 provides adequate landscaping and screening of adjacent buildings, uses and provisions of street trees. The applicant seems to have tree covered as best as can for most of the, for almost all of the structures. And the detailed landscaping plan includes landscape maintenance and care. 10.39-3 deals with provisional providing protection of adjacent properties, the intrusion of light. They can plot, the application complies with the ZBA rules regarding downcast, dark stack compliant lighting. 10.39-4 is not applicable. 395 deals with disharmony, respect to the terrain, use scale, and architecture of existing buildings. This doesn't seem to be out of, at all out of scope with what's in the neighborhood. 10.39-6 provides for screening of storage areas, loading docks, trash receptacles will be screened in the detached garage. 10.39-7 is not applicable, and 398, the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and interest of the spy law and the goals of the master plan. I mean, it does that by providing housing for two families in a innovative and thoughtful way, kind of residential neighborhood. So unless anybody disagrees with any of those findings for both the 10.39, 38, and 39 findings, as well as the findings under the ADU, I would entertain a motion that we approve the approve ZBA 2024-14, request for a special permit under section 5.0112A of the zoning bylaw for a secondary dwelling unit over 50% of habitable GSF of the principal structure on Wildflower Drive in Amherst Woods. With, with conditions and that we close the public hearing on this matter. I think I covered all of-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. White?
Just real quick. From what I'm seeing, I think you might have just done it by mistake, but 10.39-4 you said was not applicable. It is applicable, but not an issue.
Okay.
So that was the only note I wanted to make.
You know, I might have, I might have struck it out when I, oh, that's right. You're exactly right. It's, it's not a, not, not a problem. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want, just for the record.
Good. Got that straightened away. All right, so the motion before us is to approve the special permit with conditions, and then we've made the findings, and we close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
All right. Any discussion on that motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the special permit and to close the public hearing. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye, if I can see the puppy.
Aye. Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
All right, motion is approved, four to nothing. Vote requires four votes. You got it. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business is the town of Amherst. ZBA 2024-15, request for a special permit under section 3.3, 3.231 of the zoning bylaw to construct structures on the flood-prone flood-prone conservancy district, including bridges, boardwalks at 191 West Pomeroy Lane, former Hickory Ridge Golf Course map, 19D parcel 10, residential neighborhood RN and FPC flood-prone conservancy zoning districts. There was not a site plan for this matter. There is submissions. I'll get those together here. Submissions received have been ZBA 2024-15, application form, a management plan, site plans from August 10th, 2023, sheet G1L101, L102, C100, C200, sheet C300, C400, C500, sheet L501. These are all site plans. ZBA FY 2024, structure location plans, a list of structures, a bridge railing sample, a shade structure example, and Hickory Ridge zoning map. They requested waivers of a traffic impact statement, a lighting plan, and application fees. And I think we've included all the items that are included in our packet. Rob, if I'm wrong, is there anything that I've missed?
No, I think you covered it all, Mr. Chair.
I think we got it all. All right. For this, this is an application from the town of Amherst. Who's going to speak for the town?
I could get, I could start off with some background information, then I'm going to hand over to to Mr. Zomek to kind of go more into detail with the actual structures are going in the FPC. So basically, the town of Amherst is trying to construct a series of structures, including bridges, boardwalks, and a shade structure at the, say, at the former Hickory Ridge Golf Course, which is now going to be a trail network that is going to be pretty extensive. It's also the same site where the solar project's going to go, but this specific petition is just focusing on approving those structures that are located in the FPC. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to share my screen and show this map.
Yep.
Actually shows the entire property right here. And each number is the different location of a specific type of structure. So for example, number one's going to be a vehicle and pedestrian bridge. And I just also want to note that most of the project, if not all of this project is actually located in the flood-prone conservancy zoning district. So everything you see here with a number. So where my cursor is, it kind of goes out this way, all the way around is the FPC. So in order for the town to start construction on these structures, they need the special permit in order to move ahead with it. And I also want to mention that this project did receive approval from the planning board for site plan review for the use. And it did receive a order of conditions from the conservation commission as well for the structures and for the trail network. So Dave Zomek is going to go into more detail of what each structure is going to be and where they're going to go. And Dave, you can take it away.
Sure. Thank you, Rob, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave Zomek is the town manager for the town of Amherst. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah. I'm clear.
Great. I think as all of you know, this has been a project that the town has been working on for a few years. As Rob indicated, there are a number of things going on in this property. Our focus tonight is really to talk with you about the structures in the FPC. But just to round out what Rob said, you know, there is a 26 acre, the, the property itself is 150 acres. There's 26 acres of solar that is already permitted on the site. And then as part of the, the overall project master plan, our goal as the town from the start was to connect some of the neighborhoods to the north up on East Hadley Road with the Village Center, where the new roundabout is at Pomeroy and West Street. And so, working with town staff, working with state agencies, we have put together a trail plan indicated in red, and what we, we call in the lower left-hand part of the map is a loop trail, and then the north-south trail, which goes all the way from the former clubhouse all the way up to the edge of our property in the upper right of your screen, which will ultimately connect to East Hadley Road. Thank you, Rob. So tonight's discussion is focused on the eight structures that are indicated in this map. As Rob noted, they are listed over in the red box to the left, and perhaps I could just go through them very quickly. We do want to note, as Rob did, that the, the project itself has received appropriate permits and approvals from the conservation commission and the planning board. We are well aware of the history and current status of the Fort River. We understand that from time to time, the Fort River does overtop its, its banks, and many trail systems like this across the country, across the world for that matter, occasionally flood. So we are designing these trails to do exactly that. They will occasionally overtop. We think the profile of the, of the improvements is very minimal in, in the flood plain, and we've designed it not unlike, this will be essentially a six-foot-wide crushed stone trail. Not unlike the cart paths that have been out there for the last 65 years that were used for golf courts to, to move across the, the course itself. And those were overtopped with flooding, just like these trails will be from time to time. So why don't I start very quickly? On the lower left, we have the loop trail. All of these trails will meet most ADA standards. And as I said, they'll be crushed stone, relatively small improvement with a modest number of benches and appropriate kiosks at the trailhead and parking lot. So number one is a small combination bridge that will allow small vehicles to move, to maintain the loop trail, to move to the west, and it'll also double function as the getting over a small wetland area there for the, the people who participate in this, using this trail. Number two is a small raised boardwalk, again, low profile. That will not, it's so low that it will not have railings. It is not required to have railings. Number three is a pedestrian bridge. Again, these are, these are, these structures are only there because they're going over wetlands. Again, all approved by the conservation commission. Structure four is an existing bridge that'll eventually be rehabbed. That is a bridge that has been there for 60-plus years and functioned historically to get golfers and golf carts over the Fort River. Likewise, bridge number five is existing. It is a bridge that will be improved by the Pure Sky Solar Company for the building of their solar facility. And we will use it. This is number five, Rob. This, this will be used, this will double once the solar company is done constructing their, their facility. It'll then be open to pedestrians as part of our trail system. Moving on to the east, over toward West Street, bridge number six, again, is a very low-profile simple bridge. These are very simple bridges, you know, 10 feet, 12 feet long, over a tributary of the Fort River. And then the seventh structure will be a small raised boardwalk to bring us up to grade. The, Rob can point us toward the access over to West Street. We will be picking up a sewer access above number seven, and that is a road, an existing road used by the DPW to monitor a sewer pumping station. And we'll be picking that up to get pedestrians, users of the trail, hikers, bikers, over to West Street, and they could go to Crocker Farm School, they could go to the Village Center to the south. The last structure, and actually, this is one that we don't currently have funding for, is way back in the western portion of the property, kind of between number one and three. It's not numbered, but it is right, that little red dot, just to the right of where your cursor is, right there. That is proposed to be a small, simple pavilion structure to get people out of the shade, maybe have a sandwich, something like that in the future. So those are the eight structures. Again, low-profile built, solidly built to withstand some overtopping from time to time by floodwaters, and I think I'll stop there and take questions.
So the issue that's before us is just, is this, are the seven or the eight, with the potential eighth structure, those are the quest, that's the special permit application we have before us is for the construction of those eight items, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, you know, our hope tonight is to to have the, the, the zoning board find that, you know, the structures do not interfere with the Fort River and its natural flooding processes. Again, very minimal structures for the most part at grade or low profile. The conservation commission has reviewed this planning board and found that those structures are appropriate for this kind of trail. And no other structures are planned at this time, obviously, in the flood plain, in the FPC.
I know my fellow board members know that we generally defer judgments about flood plain management, stormwater runoff, and others, flood management to the expert commissions, the TomTom Commission, even though it's, and even though it's in our required findings, we generally defer to their knowledge. Most of them, you've got that order of conditions already from them, correct?
Yes. Could I also ask, ask the chair, Mr. Mora, I know is here, and as building commissioner, he has also been part of the planning for this and looked over our plans for the structures, and I just wanted to defer to him if I missed anything in my remarks.
No, I don't have anything to add. Thanks.
Ms. Marshall? Your hand is up.
Yes, so just two hours ago, Dave and I were in a different meeting hearing about how a bridge at Cherry Hill Golf Course gets washed downstream several times a year and what, how, what an expense and nuisance it is to retrieve it and get it reinstalled. So could you, you said a little bit ago, Dave, that these should withstand, these structures, proposed structures should withstand overtopping. Is there, can you elaborate? I mean, is that when there is flooding, this is slow? I mean, it's slow, it's the bridges, the whatever abutments or, or, you know, foundations they have aren't going to be undercut or?
Sure, that's a really, that's a really, through the chair, is that okay if I answer that?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent question. Well, first off, the the structure up at Cherry Hill Golf Course, I'm not sure I would really characterize as a bridge. It is a it is you know, it, it, it's something that the town placed there some years ago. It is, there is nothing firmly holding that piece of, those pieces of wood even onto they're, they're just flat on the ground. There's no concrete. There's nothing holding that structure, which again is a minimal structure. So every time it does flood, basically, the, the, the water carries that structure away. So these bridges are specifically designed to hold their place in the wetland, in the wetland complex that they're a part of. The boardwalks, the small boardwalks that we're proposing will actually be built with what are called helical or helical piers that are basically screwed into the ground. And so these have been designed by engineers and designers to stay in place and withstand, you know, certain forces, you know, like flooding water. So the structures we're proposing have just been designed in the last 12 months, and I just contrast that with kind of a big piece of wood up in North Amherst that needs to be improved. In fact, when I was before JCPC, to some degree, we should probably design something similar at Cherry Hill that is going to withstand those forces of a, a small stream like the one at Cherry. But these are specifically designed to stay in place. Again, a catastrophic flood or a you know, a, a ice shearing event 20 years from now, I don't think any of us, you know, those are catastrophic events. We can't engineer for those, but these bridges and structures are engineered to and designed to last.
Thank you.
Ms. Greenbaum?
This question I have for David is not really under our purview, but I'm interested to find out how you can have wheelchair and walker accessible sidewalks made out of crushed stone.
Mr. Zomek, go ahead.
Sure, and I may defer to Mr. Mora on that if possible, but we are designing these, well, if you could, Rob, could you jump in there?
Sure. So this is a, a base of material that's a pretty small aggregate that locks together really tight, so it gets placed really tight, so it gets placed very level, so there's, there's very little cross-pitch, there's no inconsistencies in the way that it's graded at the surface, and then it's rolled for compaction, and the material is designed to compact really well. From time to time, it will need maintenance as years go on, and the Conservation Staff will watch for those areas, but we find that the hard-packed base does hold up really well.
And there are no tree roots that would interfere as Amity Street, for example, and other places where we put asphalt, the tree roots tend to rise up.
The, the nice thing I might say about this is frankly, if tree roots do interfere, it's a little easier to get at this and, and remove those tree roots. If anyone has been to the Conti Trail over on Moody Bridge Road in Hadley, if you think about, a good portion of that structure is crushed stone, this fine crushed stone, as, as Rob indicated, that is essentially our goal. There are also some pathways at the Emily Dickinson Museum here on Main Street that are built in with the same technique. I don't know if all the ones at Emily Dickinson meet all the ADA standards that we are going to try to meet, but that is our goal. And from time to time, they, they, they will be overtopped by water and will need some maintenance. I did want to add, the initial construction of these trails is being funded by state grants, CDBG funding, and some CPA funding added to that to, to, to meet the budget.
Ms. Greenbaum, I was going to add exactly what the point that Mr. Zolmak made. I have been over to the Silvio Conte Trail, I have pushed a wheelchair around that trail, and with that material they use is pretty easy, so it, it, it does a good job keeping it pretty.
Thank you, I've done that too, but I didn't know it was the same material.
Yeah, it works pretty well. Other questions? Can we put the map up for just a second?
Yeah, sorry about that, just give me one second.
That's all right. This is not directly in our purview, I'm just trying to understand it. I remember when we approved this, the solar plan, and then subsequent to that, there was a public input gathered by the, by the town on uses of this site. And I was, wasn't sure if the parking lot, the old golf course parking lot is going to remain there, it's going to be changed, that will help a lot for access to people who don't live in the area who want to come there. Can you talk a little bit about parking availability for this site?
Sure, and, and this was very good questions, and the planning board and Conservation Commission all, all asked similar questions. So there is the, Rob is circling the existing parking lot, and this, the darker structure to the left, to the west, is the former clubhouse. So in short, our plan is to bring the clubhouse down. We are working on trying to get funding for that. It is, it cannot be reused, it was, it was, when we received the property, it was already in terrible shape, and we-
Wasn't a very good clubhouse to begin with.
Yeah, we cannot reuse that. But then the parking lot itself, we, the town staff have developed a plan to, to use the parking lot to support the trail system and potentially future uses of the frontage. But in the short term, the eastern part of the parking lot will be used for parking, we'll try to, we're going to be using some, some split rail fencing, some of the Jersey barriers, to, to try to create some buffer between the visiting public and the, the old clubhouse. And so they'll, folks, visitors will park on the right-hand side of the parking lot you see before you, they'll enter through that easternmost accessway there, and they'll also exit there, and we will kind of discontinue, except for emergency purposes, the front circle entrance there. And so people will disembark from their cars there, there'll be a nice kiosk welcoming folks with a trail map, and then off folks go to either do the loop trail or the north-south trail, or both. Or if they just want to explore the property and go fishing, or fly a kite, or do some bird watching, whatever they might do. We have not decided on what ultimately the repurposing of the area of the clubhouse will be. As folks know, I, working with the town manager, we've talked about some other uses there, potentially a south fire station could go there, potentially affordable housing, potentially some other town uses, if we in the future look for perhaps a new senior center site or a community center site, yet to be determined. But we do have some, some potential uses on the frontage.
One last question, again, this is not within our purview, but it's for my information. Aside from off the trails, do you get, can you get access to the river through, by just walking through the grass, or is it, is it, are you going to allow people to walk off, off the trails, or are they restricted trails, or is it going to be possible to walk through the, whatever that landscape will be?
Yeah, another good question. Obviously, the solar area, the 26 acres that you can see a faint outline in grayish-black, the central array is, you know, right up the middle, and then there's the western array, those will be fenced, so there'll be no access there. But the rest of the property will be town property, some of it will be conservation land, some of it will be held in general by the town. And we will encourage people to be on the trails, but like other conservation areas, if people are intrepid and want to, want to go fishing, or, or want to go bird watching, or, you know, want to run in the grass, or whatever they can. We will eventually be mowing some of the fields and keeping some of those fields in early successional habitat. It's a very complex property with a number of rare and endangered species, so not unlike other applicants, the town needs to apply to the state to get permission for some of our management goals. So we are the applicant, we are, we are regulated by the state in what we do on, in and on the river, as well as in the adjacent fields and forests. So we're working on a plan with the state for that. But yes, people will be able to, if they're willing to brave some ticks and some poison ivy, people will be able to walk around and enjoy.
Great, thank you. Well, I love the notion of using this area for public access, it makes a lot of sense. And the Fort River can be a real, could be a real boon for the area. Kids, kids can learn how to fish there, explore, it'd be great. So I like the, the trail plan, it makes a lot of sense. Other questions, comments, before we go to public comment? If not, Rob, or do you have anybody that wishes to speak from the public?
So we only have two, two attendees. Neither one of them have their hand raised. Just a reminder, if you want to make a public comment, use your raise hand function or press star nine. Nope.
All right. Any other, one last time, opportunity for board members or for the town, the applicants, the town to speak before we go to public meeting? I would entertain a motion that we move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open in case we need to gather additional information on this matter. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
It's moved in nine, two, so that's a second. So we've got a motion in second. Any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to go to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Aye. The vote is four to nothing, we're, and it carries. So now we're in the public meeting section. This is where we can deliberate and go through findings and conditions. Are there any general thoughts from board members on the application? I generally support it, and I would move to, I would move into the conditions right away. Do you look at project application report, there's two conditions. The first is pretty much boilerplate, meaning I have to be built two site plans, which are specifically enumerated here. And the second is that the order of conditions for the trail system be in full effect, and that we, we, we adopt the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. So we, we defer to the judgment of a more expert body on this, but we incorporate it in our, in our finding, in our conditions. So I would entertain a motion, does anybody have any additions to that? Rob, you have your hand up.
So I just want to clarify, Mr. Chair, the third plan that is considered the approved plan, the structured location plan, so that was the map that we were just looking at. I was going to make an edit to that to include the eighth structure on that plan, so it can be identified. In that case, the structure is the giant pavilion shade structure. It was left out, but it will be included.
All right, so the motion is to approve these conditions with the change to adopt, to add the eighth structure?
I have a question. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Marshall, yep.
Yeah, so just maybe, so I understand, condition two, the most recent order of conditions, that is from the Conservation Commission, yes?
Yes.
Could that be specified right there? Because these are also conditions, so it's-
Oh, but that's, you know, I think, Ms. Marshall, order of conditions is a term of art that applies, that comes from the Conservation Commission.
They're the only ones who issue order of conditions.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay, okay. And basically, you know, if the order of conditions were to be updated, then, you know, they're not restricted to just one specific permit file number with the DEP, they can just apply the most recent ones on the site.
Right, thank you.
Good, good question. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the condition, the two conditions with the additional map alteration for, for, I guess, structure eight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the conditions and approval in bonk, in block. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Vote is four to nothing, the conditions are approved in block, in bonk. And, you know, I've got that wrong, they're approved in block. So this is, I'm having a hard time tonight, guys, but I'm not at 100%. Next is, we have to make some, we have, we are required, as a special permit granting authority, that we have to find that such factors as those listed in 3.229 do not appreciably affect the water or table or quality. In 3.229, there are several items which the staff has identified as, that the application does not adversely affect the water, table or the water quality. Those include drainage, elevation of buildings, extent of paving, and storage of chemicals and other hazardous substances. Adequately, adequacy of sewage does not apply, control of erosion, sedimentation does not apply, location of equipment does not apply, storage of buyout, or buoyant material, not buyout, buoyant material does not apply, and the effect of fill does not apply. So I would find, I would like to move forward by saying that the, the application meets drainage, elevation, extent of paving, and storage of chemicals and other hazardous substances, factors which the special permit granting authority must find. Next, the, the section 3.320, it's just, these structures do not alter the natural course of water that seeks to restore them to the natural state. It looks to me like that's exactly what these, to extend these structures impinge or bound water, they're not there to alter its course. And it seems to me that this application does not alter natural water courses. Section 3.321, structures associated with this are allowable, uses, and accessory uses will not be located within the flood-prone conservancy district without special permit, and that's why we're here for tonight. So I think the findings under section three, we can make. Under section six, all the dimensional findings, either they do not apply, or they meet the dimensional requirements. I think, I don't think I've skipped any there. And then findings under 10.38 and 389, 381 and 382, it's suitably located in the neighborhood, it's exactly what we would, we'd want to do with this area in this, in this neighborhood. 382, 383, 385, and 387, generally does it create nuisance by various sources, it does not. 384 doesn't apply, 386 doesn't apply, 387, this is all, provides safe vehicular and pedestrian movement, especially with the large parking area there. 388 and 389 do not apply. 390 is, it's protection from flood hazards, that's, the proposal is utilizing natural drainage and seeks to increase impervious areas. Flood hazards would not be an issue for any large structure or buildings, but we have no large structure or building in this case. So I think we meet 390, 391, protects unique, important, historic or scenic features, it's designed to do that, it's in harmony with the other, the other features and natural layout of the land. 392 does not apply, 393 does not apply, 394, dealing with impact on steep slopes and wetlands. We really have to, I think we have to defer to the ConCon on this, but the site is located within a flood-prone conservancy district, within the hundred floodplain, will be in harmony with, is going to be in harmony with the environment. 395, the proposal does not create disharmony with respect to terrain, even modest structures are not going to be creating disharmony with the, the public area, public access area. 396 does not apply, 397, provides a green space for recreation, that's what it's all about, the whole area is planned for that. 398, it's in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw as well as the master plan. It's improving the Amherst Trail System and recreation and natural waters. So I'm prepared to, first of all, if there's any discussion regarding those findings, I listened to them now, and if not, I'd be prepared to entertain a motion to accept the findings under, to make the findings required of us under section three, under section six, and under section 10.38 and 3.9. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ten.
All right, it's moved in second, is any discussion? I don't miss, Ms. Greenbaum, you have your hand up. Did I miss that?
Yes, I saw typo in 10.380, I think it should be C-O-M-P-L-E, compliments, providing recreation for the residents. Complimentary, it's C-O-M-P-L-E, not C-O-L-I, complimentary. And the very first line being?
10.380?
Yeah. The position, at least is the one I have from the package, did he read the same thing?
No, we've got the same one.
He's got the same.
Under the staff.
Compliments the surrounding residential uses. It should be C-O-M-P-L-E, complimentary.
Oh, spelling.
It said typo, I would think so.
So, all right, good catch.
No, I had that written down, thank you.
We amend the motion to allow staff to make technical and conforming changes, such as this, if caught. All right, so the motion before us is to approve, is to make the findings required under 10.38 and the other sections that previously listed, and to make the change identified by Ms. Greenbaum. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I think I already did it, right? So?
Already did.
Any discussion? Yep. So the vote occurs on adopting the findings. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Findings are, we make the findings, so we've made the findings, we've made our conditions. So now the, the matter before the board is the adoption of the, of the special permit. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the special, to approve the special permit, special permit FY 2024-15 with conditions, and to close the public hearing on that matter. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All set. Chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote is four oh. It's officially vote for the passage of the special, special permit application. Congratulations, you got it. It looks like a great project. I look forward to its completion and using it.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate it. I, I think we'll certainly be, you know, we'll be under construction in four to six weeks. It'll take much of the spring and a good portion, part of the summer to get it done, but we hope to maybe cut a ribbon in late summer, early fall.
Well, let us know. We've twice acted on this, this piece of property. We'd like to see it, like to see the fruition of our work.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your consideration of the application.
Thank you. Thank you for your work too, Mr. Zaiman. The next order of business is Z B A F Y 2019-06. Antonio Marquez Diaz, who operates Mexicalito, does satisfy condition six, in which a new business owner shall present to the board for review and approval at a public meeting, an updated business, updated management plan, and any other information necessary to confirm that the use is operating within the scope of the special permit. Submissions to us include a management plan, a description from the applicant of the business model, a previous special permit when, when, from, when Jakes was granted a special permit FY 2019-06. Jake was a previous occupant of that business, that location. We have a business, a seating plan from Cisco's Cafe, which I think is, is going to be the operational plan for this building. We have a lighting plan as well from that time, and we have two renderings of signs for how the new signs will look. Is there anything else that we've gotten, Rob, in terms of submissions?
Did you mention the existing floor plan, Mr. Chair, that was submitted? Okay, so, yep. And then there's also the conditions from Z B A F Y 2019-06 that were included as well. But other than that, you did cover everything else.
Okay. Who's here for the applicant? Is it Mr. Diaz?
Yep, so I am going to promote them to panelists right now.
Mr. Diaz, are you there?
Hello?
Hello.
Maybe we should call him, maybe he's giving up, waiting for us.
Well, he did accept the panelist invitation, so he's gotta be there.
He must be there. Oh, he's up. Yeah, he's there, the panelist.
Yeah, his microphone just.
You know, he's got his microphone off, and you've got the video. Do you know how to turn the microphone on, Mr. Diaz?
You look at the bottom of the screen, bottom left.
Yep. You see a camera icon or a microphone icon? And if either of them struck through with a red line on the lower left-hand side of your screen?
It appears he's got his microphone turned on now.
Yeah, he keeps turning on and off. I guess just the video.
Okay, the micro, we can deal with just the microphone, if that's all you have. Can you, can you speak? He might have his, his volume very low, because he want to hear everything that we were saying before. I wouldn't blame him, but.
So I think if you go to the, it's possible he might have the wrong microphone selected if he's using a computer. So if he goes to where the little microphone button is, and he clicks on the arrow pointing up next to it.
Do you have his phone number by any chance?
Let me see.
It's here on the, well, that's business, business or home phone.
Let me see, I'm trying to find that.
Right on the management.
The firm, the management plan.
609, 658, 2042.
Alright, I'll give him a call.
And I can give you his email also.
I have the email as well, but thank you, Hilda.
Running low on caffeine.
You know, why don't we, I wasn't gonna have a break, because I knew we'd get through these quicker than nine o'clock. Why don't we take, just, just take a minute here? Yeah, just, I'm just gonna take a minute and walk away. I'll be back. And Rob, if you get him, don't let him go off.
Mr. Chair, Rob hasn't checked back in yet, so you didn't miss anything.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? So he's, he's working on connecting with a different device, so he should be on shortly. I apologize for delay, everybody. Hello, Antonio, can you hear me? Yep, so.
I'm not hearing.
He's still working on it.
Oh, I can hear you. Okay.
Alright.
Alright, everybody, technical delay. He's gonna call into the webinar and use his audio through his phone, so. We're working on it. We appreciate the patience. I'm sure, you know, this meeting is moving relatively quick with a big agenda, so it's.
Still moving quick.
It's, it's the last item too. And Philip, thank you for staying awake with us.
Yeah.
Did I anticipate technical difficulties tonight?
I don't know. I don't feel sorry for Philip at all.
I don't feel sorry for Philip either.
Probably sunny in Ireland.
You got a pretty good game, Philip. Go ahead.
What did you say, Hilda?
I said it's probably sunny in Ireland.
Probably.
It is midnight, so no.
Irish Sea is active. We used to blame it in Paris all the time on Irish Sea.
So I got the phone number up. He just has to figure out how to unmute himself.
So he does that by star nine, is that correct?
I believe that's to raise your hand. I think if you press, so Antonio, try pressing one.
I've also been told you may have to, like, swipe your screen or tap on it to see the various functions.
But I'm trying to figure out how to, if somebody's calling, how do they unmute on Zoom? Let me just figure that out real quick.
Star nine is.
Okay, so press stars, to do it?
We got it.
Okay, good.
Hello, hello?
Yes.
Here we are.
Yay. So sorry, guys.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's alright.
Oh my God, this is, this is the first time that I'm using my tablet and this thing and without my wife, and it was really nervous. But I'm good. How you doing, guys?
It'll be, it'll be easy, easy from here on out.
Alright, alright, I feel comfortable now.
You had the hard part of the meeting already, and you're doing it without your wife, so that makes it even, even harder.
Oh my God, really? This is my second language, and I'm really nervous, but I think I can do it. She's taking care of my, my kids.
So, Mr. Diaz, give us your name and address for the record, and then proceed and just give us a very brief synopsis of why you're here to visit, why you're here before us tonight.
Yes, yes, well, as you know, I've been working on town since, three years ago. We've been enjoying the Shirley community in Amherst, but we, we find a better opportunity going into this new location. I think for business, it will be much better for us, is because there's not many competitions in the area. And we feel really comfortable with, with the new tenant, with the new landlords there. They're supporting us to, to make the, the project, support the project, you know, so. That was one of the big reasons with the way, the way we decided to move over there. And, you know, make a cheaper cost, make better business. That's why, all, all what we're trying to do. Just for remind, the, the way, the way that we do it, you know, we, we take care about all our team. We, we, we create a family over here, and we, we really try to do our best serving the community, improving the best fresh quality and good, good service. You know, that's what we're trying to do. It's, it's a really tough business, restaurant, but it's, it's a passion, you know, it's a passion that we have. Right now, we, we're doing better, because we, we got the location in Northampton, so it is, is doing really great. But right now, we, we're trying to, to make the best decisions for the company, so that's why we, we decided to move over there.
Are you gonna keep basically the same menu and the same type of service that you had, that you had?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly the same thing. We're gonna, it, it's, you know, like, we know that this town, it's with a lot of college kids. We, we never tried to improve our big parties there and all this kind of, a lot of alcohol and all this stuff. We'd always try to keep the family familiar, so our operation hours in this location will be 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. We're gonna keep the breakfast as Cisco was doing, and, you know, we're at touch. And we got already running in Northampton, so we, we're ready to serve three meals a day. With the focus, more the focus in the food, but, you know, we, eventually we're gonna apply for the liquor license, because it's, it's a great addition, a margarita with your tacos, you know?
Yes, I do. Well, I, I have only one question, and that is that I'm sad to see you leave Amherst before I could walk to you.
Same here, same here.
Enjoy your, your business there. I, so I, I hope maybe you'll return with a third restaurant, back to Amherst, because I, I enjoyed your location there, but I also enjoy going to Cowes Lane, so that, I look forward to seeing your place there. I don't have any other questions. You've managed to, I think you've, as far as I'm concerned, I think you've met the requirements of, of condition six. You listed all the things that are required of the management plan and the additional information. You've given us a good description. I understand, I see the seating chart is from the old Cisco's restaurant. I'm assuming that you're gonna keep the, that means that you're gonna keep the, basically the same seating chart?
Yeah, exactly the same. You know, as, as I've been learning in the past three years, it's better, don't fix the things that are not broke. That place is perfectly designed, you know?
That makes sense. Do any of, do other, other board members have questions? Alright, this is a public meeting. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, yeah, just confirming, there's no outdoor seating, is there?
No, we're not applying for that this year. We decided that was gonna be a different story. The thing is, we're gonna get open running soon as possible, and that's not the, the main thing right now. So that, that may be the public discussion in the next year.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Greenbaum?
I just want to say that your downtown loss is North Amherst gain. We really need a lunch place up here.
Oh, thank you, thank you. That's great, and we're gonna do our best job.
Looking forward to coming in there.
Yeah, Mr. Diaz, I mean, it's. Well.
Well, I'm really happy to hear that, guys.
Alright, our job tonight is to approve or, I mean, to consider and to approve or disapprove the, the that he met with condition six, which he has to provide the, a new management plan and any other information necessary to confirm that the building is being, that the use is, that his operation is going to be the same as is approved under the use of the special permit. And I would have, entertain a motion to approve that, that he does satisfy condition six.
So moved.
That's, we've got it tripled, so moved and tripled.
Couldn't hear him, my God.
And not just say, it's good, that's good. Moving triple, not just second. Alright, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the request from Z B A F Y 2019-06, satisfying condition six of the previous special permit. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you. I really appreciate all of my friends.
Buenas suerte.
Thank you, and I really appreciate all your patience. Muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you, thank you, good luck.
Thank you, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Next order of business is members of the public comment from members of the public on any matter not before the board tonight. Does anybody that wishes to speak on anything other than matters before the board, raise your hand?
Crickets.
The last order, the last order of business is other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours, and in essence, that's new business. So, Rob, normally what we do is just give us an update for the upcoming meetings and the topics that we have.
Well, Mr. Chair, I thought we were gonna be doing this part of the meeting at like 9:30, but I'm glad to see we're doing it 8:12 instead. So in terms of coming up next meeting, so our next meeting is gonna be April 11th. We do have one public hearing scheduled for that. It's for a change of use, sorry, not change of use, change of occupancy status for a converted dwelling that was approved a few years ago, from owner occupied to non-owner occupied with a resident manager. And as of right now, we have nothing scheduled for April 25th, but we're anticipating permits coming in. We do actually have some review at the moment. Nothing is scheduled yet, and that's all I have.
When's the next Solar Farm hearing?
So that is actually on the 25th, and thank you for bringing that up. So that'll be one of two continued public hearings, the Schuett Road Solar, and then the other topic will be. Um, and then the other topic will be the continued hearing for the flag lot on Shea Street. So the owner is going to apply, um, and become the applicant as well because the deal with the applicant, um, fell through. So he has, he's taking over and we're gonna re-advertise the public hearing beforehand.
So, so on the twen- that's the twenty fifth?
Yes, that's the twenty fifth.
So we have, we have, we do have the solar.
Yes. The solar hearings continued and, uh, most of that discussion is gonna pertain to the updated site plans that are still being finalized by the applicant. And we're also gonna talk more about peer review.
All right.
And that's pretty much it.
So we have a month off?
Uh, you have April eleventh, uh, which is a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks, but that's just one hearing, so.
I, I was hoping, I was hoping.
I heard he was ready to come before the board. The one for Belchertown Road.
Wait, which one was that? I'm sorry. The forty B? So no, that one is still, um, they just recently did their, um, they recently submitted their project eligibility letter to the state. And right now the state is taking feedback and I believe, Rob, I don't know when the deadline is for that. Isn't that like in April? Where we can submit public comments to the state?
Yeah, we're just about a week into the thirty day review period.
Yes. So we're still pretty early on. We're anticipating the forty beef wayfires to come over the summer.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Marshall, is your hand up for a reason or are you just saying hi?
Uh, it's easier if I just leave my hand up all the time. And that was a mistake, so I will please that.
All right, well, um, I don't have anything else except I wanna say thank you to all of you for tonight. I, I was not, I'm not feeling very well. I tried to do the best I could. I kinda stumbled there a bit. So Rob and everybody else helped me out and found a few, for making a few glitches. And so, um, you've taken this influenza, influenza affected brain and. So thanks so much. Is there anything else? Any questions, comments? All right, we got done early tonight. You got forty-five minutes free that you didn't plan.
You can watch basketball. You got two games tonight.
Yeah, we can get.
You got Connecticut and you got the Celtics. They gotta undo their mess on Monday. That Monday, that was a disaster. How you can lose when you're thirty points ahead is beyond me.
Snatching defeat from the jaws of victory, yes.
All right, folks.
That was good. I like that, Sarah. I gotta remember.
Okay.
All right, thank you all. Um, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded? I think I heard two.
You're up, you got two.
All right, so moved and seconded, we adjourned. Motion is not debatable. The vote occurs on the motion. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
And Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Get better, Steve.
Yeah, feel better.
Feel better.
Thank you.